And on behalf of the entire commission, I wanted to welcome everybody here this morning to our May 11th meeting. We have a moderate schedule today and not as many folks signed up to speak as we had originally anticipated. But our thoughts will be with our school board as well as the folks that are there this morning expressing their opinions. With that said, I want to invite Reverend Bob Scott from Peace Memorial Church forward to give us our invocation. And then Commissioner Seal, if you could lead us in the pledge, please. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's a pleasure to be with you this morning. Peace Memorial is celebrating its 130th anniversary this year.
Congratulations.
And so we are located a block from the county courthouse, the 100th year of our sanctuary. So I would love to invite you to stop by and let me give you a tour and show you one of the gems of our county.
Thank you.
Let's pray. Great and gracious God, let's begin just by saying thank you. On behalf of all of the people here today, we thank you for the gift of this new day, for the blessings of family and friends, for the blessing of work and leisure. We thank you for the beauty of the earth and the privilege of calling this corner of your creation our home. And at this time, I also would like to thank you for all those who have dedicated themselves to serving the welfare of the citizens of Pinellas County. Our first responders, our paramedics and firefighters and police officers. For our amazing healthcare workers who have worked tirelessly and heroically over the last year, year and a half. For our various civil servants who work behind the scenes but who keep our various communities up and running. And I pray for the women and men of this board who have been elected to lead and guide. Oh God, give them the wisdom to govern well amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Give them a keen sense of what is needed for the welfare of all of our citizens. Give them an abiding thirst for justice and righteousness. Give them a confidence and a clarity in what is good and fitting. Give them the ability to work together even when there is honest disagreement among them. And God, give them joy and the task that we and that you have entrusted to them. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Again, I pray, give them wisdom, intelligence, imagination, and love as they debate and then decide. And may the decisions made here today benefit all whose lives, all who live and who work in Pinellas County. And may these decisions please and honor you most of all. In your most blessed name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Reverend Scott. Appreciate your being here and congratulations on the 130 years in our community. We have two proclamations this morning and three awards and then followed by a presentation and a special guest that will take a few minutes this morning to address us. So with that, we'll go ahead and start with the proclamations and just give me a minute That's just got accident waiting to happen here. So first proclamation is for our National Public Works proclamation and we have two folks from our Public Works group, Cedric Pace, Crew Chief Two, from Road and Bridge Section, and Dale Laird from the Construction Project, he's a Construction Project Coordinator from the Construction Division. And they'll be accepting these proclamations on behalf of the Public Works employees. Are they here? Come on up. Hi there.
Hi.
Welcome. Good to see you this morning. Good to see you. Please stand right here and I'll read a couple things, present you with the proclamations, get a picture, and then you guys give a couple words. You're more than welcome. Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Pinellas County. These services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals who are employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, natural environment, and other services, essential for our citizens. It is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Pinellas County to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective communities. This year, 2021, marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. And now therefore be proclaimed by the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners that the week of May 16th through the 22nd be recognized as National Public Works Week. And be it further proclaimed that the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners urges all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and the government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our Public Works professionals, engineers, managers, employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make in protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Here you go. Each get one. I'll take a picture right over here. Hold on. Let me get this on here. Thank you. And gentlemen, if you'd like to just say a couple words, your microphone is yours.
Cedric and I are proud to be a representative of Public Works for this award. And I am proud to also be a representative as Vice Chair of the Executive Committee for the West Coast Branch of the American Public Works Association to receive this award. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Such amazing professionals that we have, and I know all of us here have had opportunities to work with each of them out in our public sector and working with residents as challenges come their way, and I just can't thank them enough for what they do. Our second proclamation is Emergency Medical Services Week, and I'd like to ask Jim Fogerty, Director of Safety and Emergency Services, Doug Frost, Critical Care Transport, Nurse Manager from Sunstar Paramedics, to join me up here. They'll be accepting the Emergency Medical Services Week proclamation of the EMS workers in Pinellas County. Gentlemen, it's good to see you this morning. Good to see you. Okay. National Emergency Medical Services Week is an opportunity for all of us to reflect on the dedicated efforts of our EMS system personnel who provide compassionate, quality care and service to our community every day. Obviously, clearly, this past year, it's risen to another level. The high skill level and professionalism of our emergency medical dispatchers, emergency medical technicians, and paramedics have enabled the EMS system to attain clinical excellence. The longstanding partnership with our fire rescue agencies for paramedic first response, the countywide paramedic ambulance services, and our hospitals allow emergency medical services to be provided seamlessly. Our EMS providers made significant contributions and immeasurable sacrifices during our local response to the world coronavirus pandemic, responded with compassionate care to the sick and vaccinated tens of thousands of citizens. National EMS Week brings our community and EMS providers together to celebrate our accomplishments and rededicate ourselves to our mission. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners that the week of May 16th through May 22nd of 2021 be recognized as Emergency Medical Services Week. And here you go, gentlemen. Take this. Let's get it right here in the middle. Picture here. Thank you. And the microphone is yours.
Thank you very much. Doug and I have worked the streets as far back as 40 years ago, and we saw each other earlier over there. We didn't recognize each other. One of us has grown old, and I won't say which one. I want to say thanks. It's really a remarkable system that we have, and I wanted to say thank you very much to the board, the chair, our county administrator, and all the departments. Because standing up here saying thanks for all the efforts and work that have been done, not only this past year, but for the decades that you have supported this system, it's an honor and I feel privileged to have been able to do that. So thank you very much. But more importantly, I'd like to say thank you to the men and women that are out there working the streets, the hundreds, if not thousands, of hours of dedication they've put forth to make sure this community has come through this pandemic and any other calamity that the world could throw our way. We're ready to serve this community. Thank you very much.
And speaking of the professionals that he was speaking about, we have three here this morning that have risen above maybe some of their peers in some areas, and it gives us a chance to recognize them. And so now we're going to recognize Emergency Medical Services Professionals of the Year. I'd like to acknowledge that the Pinellas Federal Credit Union has supported the Emergency Medical Services Professionals of the Year Award for 31 straight years since the first awards were given in 1990. So if Monica Lukasik, who's a marketing specialist from the organization, is here, she could come up here and be with me as we present these awards. Each year, the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners recognizes three individuals named Emergency Medical Services Professionals of the Years. And you'll recognize from, as we learn a little bit about each one of them, that they come with multiple talents, multiple skill levels to their jobs every day. First, we're going to play a video that will introduce these emergency professionals and highlight their award-winning efforts, and then I'll bring them up one at a time so that we can properly acknowledge them. Thank you.
Members of Pinellas County's Emergency Medical Services Team save lives every day.
911, what's he addressed the emergency?
This year, three individuals stand out as 2021's Emergency Medical Services Professionals of the Year. Hard work, grit, and intelligence is why David Walker is Paramedic of the Year. The eight-year veteran knows how to think on his feet to save lives. David proved this again on a recent call when he discovered not one, but three patients in distress at the scene.
These are very critical calls. These are patients that are not breathing at all. We were able to then move from one patient. I left her with that patient. I continued on with further assessments with the other two. We were able to call out additional resources and additional units, which that's what this job's about. Everybody was able to come in, help out. We all knew what we needed to get done for the positive outcomes of these patients.
Ever humble, David gives the credit for his success to the team he works with.
I have a great crew, great EMTs, great officers. Everybody's able to assist each other. We all work very well together.
Offering exceptional public service from the Regional 911 Center is why Matthew Albright is Telecommunicator of the Year.
I'm going to tell you to do chest compression.
Recently, Matt put his 13 years of experience into action during a call.
I want you to count out loud so I can count with you. It's going to be one, two, three, four, one, two, three.
A man's heart had stopped. Matt coached his 13-year-old son through CPR until units arrived on scene, saving the father's life.
All right, you're doing a great job. You're doing perfect.
He had a full recovery. He was in there for many days, but that was one of the good ones.
A passion for helping people, outstanding bedside manner, and near-perfect documentation standards are why Aaron Pierce is EMT of the Year. Aaron's skills and attention to detail have helped him excel at training new recruits.
I think the opportunity to train someone who's either fresh in the field or even maybe not necessarily new to the field but new to the company, being able to train them the right way and show them the ropes the right way is an excellent opportunity.
An EMT for just over a year, Aaron feels privileged to be able to help people during the most difficult times of their lives.
I think being able to be a part of that, and if I can make it better, that's a pretty unique opportunity, and that's an opportunity to have as an EMT.
The Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners congratulates David Walker, Matthew Albright, and Aaron Pierce, the 2021 EMS Professionals of the Year. And on behalf of the county, thank you to all of our emergency professionals for your service.
We're first going to recognize our telecommunicator, so Matt Albright, if you'll come forward. Well, you all don't look like Matt.
Matt was on duty last night. He got off at 6:00 a.m. this morning. He was unable to be here. This is Michelle Peterson.
Michelle. I'll do the first one. Nice to see you, Michelle. Michelle Peterson?
Yes.
Okay. So Michelle will be accepting Matt's award for him. He was working last night and got off at 6:00 a.m. this morning, so he won't be here this morning. But just as the tape said or the video said, Matt is being recognized for his calm and professional handling of a 911 call for chest pain in which the patient was unresponsive, and he helped bring that person back with directions to his son, to the patient's son. And he's now fully recovered, and the patient obviously survived, which is just an awesome story. So I will give this to you, and we'll take a picture with you in it. And that behind here, please, over here. Go right in the middle here, please. There we go. Right here's the hole.
Do you want to get this in, or you want to smile?
If you'd like to say a couple words.
Thank you. My name is Michelle Peterson, and I am the Operations Manager over Regional 911. And I just wanted to take the time to acknowledge Matt. He always gives 100%, whether it be he's taking a 911 call from someone who's most likely having the worst day of their life, or whether it be he's dispatching the responders to a critical incident. So he definitely deserved this award, and I would like to say thank you for acknowledging him.
Yeah, it's amazing how calm they stay in the middle of all of that chaos, if you will, or panic or whatever. So special talent for that. Next, I'd like to ask Aaron Pierce to come up, please. Hello? Welcome. Good to see you. Thank you, please. And Aaron's been with Sunstar for a year. He made a big impression on his supervisors and his patients. He's part of the group of EMTs that staff the county's basic life support ambulances, but is often called upon to work on the 911 ALS ambulances. He's being recognized this morning for his overall professionalism, positive attitude, and being a role model as a field training officer. And he's continuing to accelerate his career and has already started paramedic school. So with that, congratulations. Let's take a picture. Thank you. And the microphone is yours if you'd like. You're sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Aaron. You get this in a couple years, Aaron, and I'm sure you'll say a few words, but thank you for your service. Appreciate it. And finally, I'd like to have David Walker join me up here, please. David is being recognized as a passionate caregiver who serves as a role model. He is known as a hard-working, this is quote now, "hard-working, gritty, intelligent, seasoned young star with the St. Petersburg Fire Rescue." He carries himself well in stressful situations, including as a hazmat team member, training paramedics and EMTs as a CME instructor, and as a member of the competition team that won the 2020 National Gems Games Awards. Are you going to the 2021 again? Or?
No, they're over.
Oh, they're over already? I thought they were in August. No? Okay. In any event, they won in 2020, and he was part of that team. And really want to thank you for all of your work and all of your service to St. Petersburg and Pinellas County. And we'll give, get the picture. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
The microphone is yours if you'd like. I just want to say I'm actually really honored to get this. I've been in the system now for seven years. I've seen a lot of great paramedics in Pinellas County, so you guys, for me to get this, I'm very surprised. I feel truly honored. And the paramedics in Pinellas County are by far the top in the nation, I think. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that for the, okay. I'm going to go ahead and recognize our business partner that we're trying to recognize today, Martin Bischoff, who's President and shareholder of Kramsky North America, and thank him and his company for choosing Pinellas County. So I'm going to just say a couple things about his company and about him, but if you'll come up and join me, that would be great. Welcome, Martin. Okay, well, I'm sure we'll learn a little bit more from Martin, but also we have a video here in a minute. But just a little background, Kramsky specializes in precision stamping and injection molding for customers in the automotive and medical industries. They are based in Germany, and their North American headquarters operations are located right here in Pinellas County within the city of Largo. Martin began his career as an apprentice toolmaker in 1972 in Germany where he met the founder of the company. In 2002, the Kramsky family and Martin founded Kramsky North America in Pinellas County. Today, he oversees all operations on the continent and a team of 35 dedicated staff that are located here. Working with Pinellas County Economic Development and Global Tampa Bay, Martin agreed to be part of a video to share the advantages of doing business right here in Tampa Bay and in Pinellas County with other companies considering locating in our community. And now we'll go ahead and show a brief three-minute video.
Welcome to the Tampa Bay region, a fast-growing and diverse business center on the Gulf Coast of Florida. The Florida counties of Hillsborough, Pasco, and Pinellas make up a community of Fortune 500 companies, evolving technology firms, advanced manufacturers, innovative life science firms, a major air force base, and a landing pad for foreign-owned businesses.
My name is Ed Callahan. I'm President and CEO of Metrome USA. I've had the fortunate luck to be with Metrome for over 20 years. Our main business is the production and the distribution and support of instrumentations for both laboratory and process.
My name is Reinhard Seib. I'm an optical engineer. With me at Opta, I have worked since 1991, and we have a manufacturing facility in the Czech Republic. As an international company, logistics was absolute key to us, both for all the materials that we bring in, the shipments, our customers are global, we're shipping throughout the world, and also for people that visit us or engineers that work with us. And the Tampa region between the Tampa International Airport and the Port of Tampa were really ideally suited for us.
My name is Martin Bischoff. Company is Kramsky US, and I'm the President. The company was started in Germany in the '70s by Wistrav Kramsky. Then he expanded into Sri Lanka. It was easy to find a building. It was easy- Sri Lanka. It was easy to find a building. It was easy to find the people. We had already the orders. And since I lived here, it was fairly easy to start this company.
As a foreign-owned company, the Tampa Bay region has offered our employees a reasonable cost of living, a place where they could set up roots and look long-term towards what they want to do, not only professionally, but also personally. And that's been a great draw in what we've been able to do in the Tampa Bay area.
Here in Pasco, we found this affordable property and a very qualified workforce. But any industry that has a need for low-cost operation while still maintaining a high-quality workforce probably do well settling here.
We are very close to the airport. This is another advantage for us because if we have a new business, you know, the people like to come in, they like to see what we do. The thought also was if we need more personnel, especially very qualified personnel, it's easier to have higher people from up north, from the Chicago area or North Carolina area, to come down here as the other way around. It's a very good area.
I have lived 20 years in Florida and 20 years in the cold part of the country, and I would never go back. I really find that it's what's more important is that the quality of life, just living here, is that much better than it was up there.
Whether you're foreign-owned or not, Tampa Bay offers so much. So we have a vision, we have a philosophy that is about taking care of our customers, taking care of our employees, and really building a community around us. And Tampa Bay is that community, and it will be our community for a very long time.
And please join me in welcoming Martin Bischoff of Kramsky North America, as we thank him for doing business in Pinellas County. This is yours? And you have, microphone is yours.
Good morning. Thank you for the very warm introduction and welcome. Connectors and sensors for medical and automotive. The main draw to Pinellas County was the labor force. When I moved from Germany to this area in 1995, I made many connections before starting Kramsky North America. It was therefore not difficult to find the right people to build the company. In the beginning, there was a lot of collaboration between our facilities and the headquarter in Germany. Direct flights to and from Tampa International Airport in Stuttgart was certainly a draw to the area. So was the warm weather and the beautiful beaches. Getting the employees from Kramsky GmbH to assist and train the US-based employees, it always was easy. For many of those people, it seems just like an opportunity for vacation. The company started in 2002 and we soon outgrew our facility and primary road. At that point, we could have moved anywhere, but it was easy finding other large space in the area very close. We are happy to call Pinellas County our home. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Martin. Appreciate it. And we really appreciate your doing business here in Pinellas County. Did any of the commissioners have a question?
If you have a question, please ask.
Thank you very much, Martin.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have a special guest today from the Florida Association of Counties, their President, Melissa McKinley. I'm going to let Commissioner Long introduce her, please.
Okay, Melissa, I don't know where you went. I know she's here because I saw her. Oh, there you are. Welcome to Pinellas County. And I just want to say how delighted I was when you indicated that you'd like to come and speak to us on behalf of that. And I also would like to thank you for your incredible leadership, tenacity, and grace during this very, very difficult year. So we're all excited to hear what's going on with that and look forward to another really robust year coming up.
Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and members of the commission. It's a pleasure to be here with you this morning. I'll start with a brief introduction. As Commissioner Long stated, I'm Melissa McKinley. I'm a County Commissioner in Palm Beach County, Florida, and currently serving as the President of the Florida Association of Counties. I grew up down the street in Sarasota County and actually spent time working for Sarasota County. My brother worked here in Largo for some time, back when Eckerd Corporation was here, and my sister's just across the bridge. So it's a little bit like homecoming for me. But I also, my district in Palm Beach County, everybody always thinks of it as being a very urban county. Well, my district is the western side, which is very rural. It's actually one of the largest agricultural districts in the United States, largest east of the Mississippi. So I was a little perplexed today, driving down the road here and getting stuck at a red light behind a truck full of bales of hay. So there's apparently some things about Pinellas County that I don't know. But it's a pleasure to be with you today. I can tell you that when I took the gavel as the Association of President, the President of the Association last year, we did it virtually. It certainly was not what I expected as my presidential year. And I keep hearing people tell me, wow, you've really lost out on your presidential year. And I don't really see it that way. We've had to adjust. We've had to do a lot of our meetings hybrid style. We started off virtually, of course, with our annual conference. Very difficult to stand up at a podium and give a speech to a virtual audience. So hats off to all of you that have had to do that this year. But it's been a learning experience, certainly having to adjust rapid fire under a lot of public pressure. And I think that you all can empathize with that as leaders. I will tell you, I'm very happy and thankful to see the men and women in green in your chambers this morning. Certainly, law enforcement has been a welcome, sadly, a welcome addition to our chambers as well, where some members of the public don't tend to agree with us very gracefully from time to time. But my hat's off to you in your leadership this year and everything that you've had to do to adjust, everything that the association has done to adjust. And I can tell you, when we started this year, we were really worried that our membership numbers would go down, that our participation numbers would go down. And pleasantly, what we've learned is they've actually gone up. Being able to offer a lot of the trainings online has been a welcome addition to a lot of folks, you know, being able to do some of our conferences hybrid style. I will tell you, we did our legislative conference in Jacksonville hybrid. We had over 100 people actually physically attend, and about the same number attended, and I know Commissioner Flowers, you were there, the same number attended our legislative day in Tallahassee. And we were very fortunate after both of those conferences, by following those CDC protocols and having people who attended actually follow those protocols. We never did have a positive COVID result as a result of our conferences. And I do hope, of course, with the governor's most recent change, our annual conference will be all in-person. So I do hope that you will attend that. But part of why I'm here today is I've been making the rounds around the state of Florida as best I can, trying to keep up with my own commission responsibilities, just to say hello and just to say thank you. All of the counties that I have visited so far have been small counties. I know you're going to find this hard to believe, but it's a lot easier to get on their agenda. But this is my first large county that I've been able to speak to, and it's nice to be among friends. And I tell our small county folks who tend to be the ones that send the most people to our conferences, and they're sort of the backbone, but it's the large counties that are really the financial backbone of the organization. We would not be able to do what we do without your support. In Pinellas County, I mean, I've got three former legislators that I'm speaking to today that I've looked up to over the years, and it's an honor to be before you. But you are one of the most active counties in our association, and we appreciate that so much. Commissioner Long and Vice Chairman Justice, I appreciate the leadership roles that you took on this year and how you've creatively navigated our virtual experiences. And it's a pleasure to work and to get to know both of you. And Chairman Eggers, I know I reached out to you recently. My heart went out to you when you guys were looking at a potential environmental disaster with Piney Point. And it was nice to know that we have all of the mutual aid agreements in place to be able to help you. I'm dealing with a toxic blue-green algae outbreak in my district right now, and so I know what those environmental scares mean to the community. So really, it was just to come and say thank you. We survived session this year. More than 25 preemption bills were filed. Sadly, we've seen some of those signed into law already. The House, thankfully, there was some leadership in the House of Representatives this year that pushed back on a number of other preemptions and changes to our FRS system. We have one of the best, if not the best, Legislative Affairs Team in Tallahassee. I know you have an in-house team, but the FAC team is also your partner and your resource. Please continue to utilize them as we start to go through the line item veto process, as we start to continue to go through getting bills signed into law. And maybe we'll get lucky and get a couple of vetoes in there as well. Fingers crossed, right? But also, the office in Tallahassee is your home away from home. And if you need a place to work this year, well, I think they're opening up the Capitol next week for special session. But if it ends up being closed and you need office space to work, you need help making appointments, please use us as a resource. That's what we're there for. And they do have snacks and other things there if you need to refresh a little bit. But it is your home away from home, and you are a member, and that is your home. So please use it. But really, today was just about coming to say thank you for everything that you guys do, for being a partner, for being one of the Big 12. We've had a lot of pressures this year that we've had to deal with. And my sheriff loves his $700 million budget, but I got to tell you, if he saw the facility down the road that your sheriff has, he'd be jealous. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions. And again, it really was just to come and say thank you to each of you for your participation and leadership.
Well, again, thank you for being here and thanks for your leadership this past year. It's been an important year, and your presence and your grace and your demeanor has been very welcome. And thank you for all of that. And is there any questions? Did you have anything specific question? Anybody have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Flowers?
I don't have a question, but just a comment or complimentary comment. Thank you so very much for the legislative session that we had in Tallahassee, although, you know, we all initially met over in the convention center. Just the number of speakers that actually, you know, came in person to provide information and show support for a unilateral call to action, if you will, I thought was absolutely wonderful. Everybody was so warm and gracious. And also, thank you for all of the training components that you offer that have been, I think, very well attended, and they've made it interesting. Whenever you can make financials interesting, I guess, you know, it's a really good crew. And just super kudos to the staff over at the FAC office. They may have completed it by now, but they were in the midst of expanding the communication and marketing room by which to do some podcasts, just really adapting to where we are right now and looking at continuing that in the future. So I've really enjoyed getting to know the staff and getting to know other commissioners throughout the state of Florida and helping to carry some of the water, if you will, related to our platforms as a county, county-wide organization. So thank you for coming to visit today.
Commissioner Flowers, the last time I stood on the floor, the Civic Center in Tallahassee was when I graduated college. So it's a little odd to be back on that floor. It actually ended up being a really good venue for us. But I think you bring up a really good point. We're neither Republican nor Democrat. We're local elected officials at the Association. And being able to have that nonpartisan position and recognize that our sole mission as members of the Association in this environment is to protect local home rule. And we're seeing it, the attacks on home rule grow each year. And it's so nice to be able to join hands, Republicans and Democrats, and work together on these issues. And your presence in Tallahassee meant a lot, so thank you for being there. But also, please, if you do go to Tallahassee, if you give Ginger a little bit of a heads up that you're going to be up there, she'll pull you into that studio and record a podcast with you. So just a warning, but if that interests you, take advantage of it.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? All right. Well, again, thank you, Melissa, for everything you've done this past year and for being here this morning.
Absolutely.
It brightened our morning. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Good to see you.
Okay. We have, when I was coming in this morning, there was a couple of folks out there wondering about the ordinance, the mask ordinance. And I explained to them that we won't be taking up the state of emergency. We won't be taking up any mask ordinance this morning, that the governor's actions last week. And then we went on at the end of the week and didn't renew anything. So in any event, it's a different morning than what we had expected. And I made a comment at the beginning that there are a lot of good people that are expressing a lot of heartfelt emotions about this issue, whether for or against the masks. And I just, again, my thoughts this morning are with the school board members who are having the opportunity to hear from them again as they wind down their school year. I think they've already made the announcement that at the end of the school year, that they won't be using masks going forward. But nonetheless, there is going to be a hearing this morning, and I anticipate a lot of folks there. We just wanted to kind of center ourselves a little bit. We're going to go straight into citizens to be heard here in just in a few minutes. But I just wanted Barry, maybe to make a couple of comments specific to what's going on and maybe even the signage that's out in our, I'd really ask folks that are out there, if you see, if you have our county signs in your windows, please do your best, remove those and put, if you want to maintain the mask masking in your place of establishment, you can put your own sign up there in return. But with that, Barry, let's turn it over to you.
Well, good morning. Let me start by just kind of giving you an update, as Dr. Cho has done for the last year. So our seven-day case count averages 113 new cases a day. So we still have an issue within our community, but we have made a lot of progress. Our percent positivity for the last seven days is 3.5%. Probably the lowest it's been in a long, long time. So there's a lot of good news. Some neighboring counties don't, haven't necessarily seen that drop, but hopefully, as we continue to see our vaccination rates increase, that we'll continue to see those numbers go down. We currently have 52% have received at least one dose of residents 18 years old or older, and the series complete being at 42%. We have, as we had said before, continued to see our, the amount of people going to get a vaccine significantly decreased as a percentage. We did our last shots for our pod sites last week, so we'll be continuing to ramp those down. We'll complete the series. If you got it at our place, you can still continue to do that for, over that three-week period. But as you've also seen, you know, at all the private pharmacies throughout the county, there's plenty of vaccine available. So we still urge people to consider getting vaccinated and to make, come to our website and look at where you can go. But it should be pretty straightforward. As a result of the governor's order, we did let our state of emergency expire. That removes the, both the mask mandate, the restrictions on bars, and our ceded-be-served and social distancing, those requirements. It also removed the requirement to have safety plans in place for any large events that we had in place. So those have expired. The signs that are up, the blue signs, and in some cases, the yellow signs from the original Safer at Home order from, I think, last March or February are still up in people's businesses. Those no longer apply. If a, and I think the sheriff made very, very clear, that if a business chooses to have their own restriction of whatever that is, that they're prerogative as a business owner. But they should remove our sign because it's not under our order that they would be doing that. That would be as a private business owner. So I think. So I think that gives you a little bit of what's occurred over the past week. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Barry, could you, I don't know if you're up to speed on the community vaccine programs that we have going on right now. Maybe an update on that, or if there's somebody here that might be able to speak to that?
Well, we continue to have our Health Equity Group, if that's what you're referring to. So plans for this week will be at Child's Park Recreation, High Point, Friendship MB, whatever that is, and Frank Pierce Recreation Center. We continue to have, work with community groups on homebound programs. And I think the main thing that you're going to continue to see, now, we, again, we still have our site. I also failed to mention that the YMCA, the Clearwater YMCA, that is a state site that is continuing to operate, and they do a drive-through vaccine, and then obviously, all of the pharmacies. So there's plenty of opportunities out there. We're working to, I think, make it more accessible out in the community. We really need capacity. So with businesses, we've had requests from businesses, well, before, all of our vaccine was being used at our pod sites. Well, now we have vaccine. So if they have the ability to get shots in the arm, they want to set up specialized sites, we can probably work with them. But contact the Health Department, you know, and Dr. Cho, and we'll try to accommodate that. We're looking to do some special missions where, just like with our Health Equity Group, where we work maybe with hotel owners, we're looking at one down on Clearwater Beach where we have 500 Johnson &amp; Johnson. So that'd be a one-shot series, trying to make that more accessible for people that maybe are working a lot of hours and don't take the time to go to a pharmacy. So, but I think you're going to continue to see those missions throughout the summer. This isn't over. We want to continue to encourage people to get vaccinated, and we'll try to make it as convenient and easy as possible.
Okay. Thank you, Barry. Any questions for Barry? Okay. Appreciate that. All right. We're going to go right into our citizens to be heard, and I have a couple of cards of people who are here. First up will be Greg Pound and then David Ballard Geddes Jr. And then we'll have four folks that are online.
Greg Pound, Largo, Florida. Commissioners, we have a problem in our county with the destruction of our families and a major problem with our youth, our fatherless children. And I see a real, I actually see an adversarial system in our court system against our families. And you give the funding to the courthouse, and somehow, you're going to have to take, make some kind of investment in our families. You go down to the beach and you look at the young people, and you talk to them. Go down there and talk to them. You got to get out on the street and start talking to the people, especially our next generation, because they're in trouble. And, you know, as a Christian, the Bible says, God, the Creator, hates divorce. He hates it. And when the largest, the largest income coming into the court system is family court, because once they destroy that family, they got the father, the mother, the children stuck in the system for the rest of their life because of the chaos that's going to come into their lives. And so I was hoping I could try to encourage you. I'm sure you all have families, and you can see what's going on. And, you know, it's just, and I see it, I see the love of money. It's just like the commissioner that was talking up here about, you know, trying to take the rights away of the counties, the different counties. And it's all, it has to do with federal grant money. I mean, you're giving up your rights because you get grant money and you, and it's the same thing with all the states. They get federal grant money. And so you're selling us, it's a, it's a, it's a big trade. You have to give up something, and we're going to give you money. And that's what, that's what politics, that's how it works. So what happens is, you know, I would just want to encourage you, as you look around and you see the insanity that we're living in, and it's, I mean, our families are being destroyed, totally destroyed. Our population's not growing because people are having children. It's because of immigration. And, you know, and we just look and we just see. It's, it's just really sad. I mean, I've been spending down there this, this whole past month with the young people coming down from different states, and you talk to these young people, and they're being programmed with a moral perversion, with a sexual perversion that's just unbelievable. I mean, you just go and see the way they dress. I mean, I don't know if I need to, I did take pictures and took them over to the store, over at the Office Depot, and had them blown up, and I was going to bring them in here and show them to you. I mean, you're talking about almost total nudity. In other beaches, they fine people for dressing like that. And people come here with their families and stuff, and I talk to them, and they don't like it. They don't want to bring their kids, their children here and then see these other children walking around with a string going up, up their behind and almost no clothes on, almost total nudity. I said, the people in the jungle wear more clothing than what they do. And so it'd be nice if you could try to invest in our families. Thank you.
David Ballard Geddes Jr. And then Kat, we'll go to you with.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Ballard Geddes Jr. I live on Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. On March 15th in Tallahassee during the Committee on Environment and Natural Resources, Senator Burgess brought Senate Bill 1058 to the floor for a vote. Senate Bill 1058 is an act relating to sewer laterals and inspection programs. The program is being used to launch an assessment on all points of connection. The act establishes programs of legal and financial responsibility to all properties now claimed as being integrated. On my first reading of Senate Bill 1058, it appears that the residential homeowner is the one to be held harmless, indemnified, as expressed by Senator Burgess on the Senate floor. Yet, on further introspection of the bill, the developer, the plumber, is the one that is to be held harmless in his or her assessment of civilian-owned properties in contracting with the senator's integrated appropriation process. The assessment is to be charged against, but not limited to, all residential properties, not only charging, levying upon the homeowner's property, but holding all property deed holders, persons of such as being personally liable for jurisdictional assessments now claimed as being integrated property of the jurisdiction. The act takes residential property and integrates all points of property into becoming one monolithic system of jurisdictional property as being personal property of the jurisdiction as integrated into their monolithic system as property of their individual jurisdiction to include the residents themselves as being integrated property, making residents liable to be assessed, directly taxing the residents on all points of connection. The residents, as assessed, are being held liable and are to be taxed directly as integrated into their monolithic system as property of the jurisdiction. The bill, Senator Burgess, he has claimed eminent domain of my person, and I find this to be an infringement regardless of what Home Rule Charter has to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Kat, I'm just, I'm showing four under citizens to be heard, so we'll turn it over to you.
Yes, I have four individuals who pre-registered by Zoom, and then one who has indicated that she was going to call by phone. And it looks like only a few people have joined us, but I'm going to call each name. So the first, first person I have on my list is Mr. Craig Murtha. Mr. Murtha, if you could raise your hand in the Zoom application or press star nine on your phone to speak on this item. And Mr. Murtha has not joined us this morning. The next individual is Toni Kuvater, butchering that last name. If you could raise your hand in the Zoom application or press star nine on your telephone to speak on this item. And again, he has not joined us this morning. Mr. Bruce Rumble is the next individual. And it looks like Mr. Rumble has not joined us. We do have Ms. Aiden Barnes. Ms. Barnes, if you could raise your hand in the Zoom application. Once you're unmuted, if you could state and spell your name for the record, state your address. You will have three minutes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Aiden Barnes, address 10240 127th Avenue in Largo. I'd like to speak on the proposed gas tax. Pinellas County has one of the highest median property tax rates in the United States. Proceeds from Pinellas County property taxes are used locally. 44% funds Pinellas County schools, 23% goes to city government, and 24% of property taxes go to Pinellas County. Pinellas County property tax income does not go to the federal or state budget. It's to be used right here for local projects and services such as infrastructure and municipal government projects. I call on this Board of County Commissioners to explore other options to fund the 2022 transportation budget shortfall instead of implementing a new 5% gas tax. Just because tourists will pay in money from a higher gas tax is not a reason to impose this tax on Pinellas County residents. This new tax will be detrimental, especially to struggling low-income, working-class, and middle-class Pinellas County residents. Grocery prices, the cost of living, and the price of gas are already going up substantially right now in Pinellas. Many in our county have already dealt with job instability and lost wages this past year due to the foreclosure of small businesses and the government's response to COVID. Why should residents be burdened with an additional 5% gas tax when they already pay a quarter of their substantial property taxes to Pinellas County? Another option to explore is the tens of millions of dollars in funding already allotted to Pinellas County from Penny Ford Pinellas. There must be projects that can be postponed to pay in order to fund transportation necessities mentioned in a prior meeting, like right-of-way mowing and sidewalk repairs. I look forward to learning more at the Budget Workshop for Public Works on May 19th. Until then, I speak for other residents when I say, please, research and explore other options, for example, decreasing expenditures to match revenues, using other funds, and utilizing money already allotted to the county to pay for transportation budget needs. We do not want the 5% gas tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Aiden.
And Mr. Chair, the last individual I have is Ms. Virginia Frizzle. She's joining us by telephone. Ms. Frizzle, if you could, press star nine on your phone to speak on this item. Great. And then we are going to ask you to unmute. Once you're unmuted, if you could state and spell your name for the record, state your address. You will have three minutes. And you may need to press star six to unmute.
Okay, you can hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
You can hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. All right, Virginia Frizzle, 14956, Largo, Florida. You'll be glad to hear that everybody that was going to show up there today is now at the school board. And so we appreciate the fact that we are all done with the county mask mandate. I just want to say I agree with Amanda, what she just said on this gas tax, that there's enough money being spent on gas, and we have inflation obviously going up. So I with her would like you not to include this gas tax. Have a great day.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, that's the last of the people who have pre-registered on this item.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Kat. All right. We're moving on to the consent agenda. We have eight items here. And again, I'll mention four. Under economic development, there's a ward of a bid to Advanced Engineered Systems Corporation for the Starr Center Fire Alarm System replacement to the tune of $687,250. Under Public Works, there is a cooperative agreement with Swift MUD for a project or contract amount for $500,000. The county is responsible for $250,000. There's a ward of bid to David Nelson Construction for the Bridgeway Acres Class 1 landfill, ditch slope rehab project. And that went to the lowest bidder, and it was David Nelson Construction for 1.348 million. And then finally, under utilities, we have a ranking of the firms and agreement with Benro Enterprises doing business as Roka Controls for professional design build services. And that'll be Phase 1 of 866,365. And with that, we have some other items under the consent. I need a motion for approval. Commissioner Long, motion. Commissioner Flowers, second. Any questions? Anything else want to be pulled? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we'll move on to Item 17, County Administrator Burton.
Item 17 is change order number nine to a contract with American Facilities. This is for janitorial services, and this adds additional locations, the Clergacourt's Park Street location, the Construction Licensing Board location, South County Service Center, our vaccination sites, and out of mosquito control in the north, the Sheriff's North District Station.
Commissioner Peters on the motion. Commissioner Gerard on the second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 18.
Item 18 is a transfer of installed assets from Administrative Services to the Sheriff's Office. This is a housekeeping item to transfer stuff following post-completion of the jail infrastructure upgrade project.
Commissioner Gerard on the motion. Commissioner Long on the second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Item 19.
Item 19 is a resolution expressing support for a qualified applicant for an ad lib alarm tax exemption. You heard this before. This is a company, a medical manufacturing company. Without me, we do have Susan Chapman here from Economic Development that'd be happy to explain this. I believe you were briefed on this individually.
Yeah, come on up. I think she's had an opportunity at least to reach out to most, if not all of us. Welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so this project, as I, we submitted the paperwork, it was under confidentiality. But since then, we have talked to the company. We have gathered additional details and additional information, and they also allowed us to release confidentiality. So I can tell you that this company that we're working with for this project is Hulkey Roberts. They're a manufacturer that's been in Pinellas County for just over 30 years, and they are looking to expand, to add another building to their, to expand their medical line. So they manufacture valves, and some of the valves that they're manufacturing are going to be used for different products and ventilators that have now been in high demand. So this expansion project is also a project that could go to some other states. We're competing with Alabama and Texas. Specifically, at their Alabama location where they have another facility, they just purchased an additional 30 acres of property. So we do have competition on this project, and the competition is real. I can tell you that after talking to the company. It is, it is a real risk. And one of the things that we like to look at is the long-term benefits and also any additional projects that could come up. You know, once we get one project and we're successful, we have a better opportunity for any future expansion projects. I would like to answer any questions that you have.
So just to be clear, I mean, you also sent us a handout. It was pretty convoluted on what the process is.
Yes.
If you can follow it.
Sure.
But bottom line is, what you're here today for is just getting the approval process in order, so that there's a number of steps that still have to go through. You're still going to bring it back here for approval.
Correct. It is a multi-step process. It is a complex program. We are guided by Florida statute on this program. So what we put together, and we kind of use this internally, is a flow chart to kind of help guide us through the process as well. So you will see right now, we are at the top, kind of the third box down, where we are just coming to the commission with this project, asking for a resolution to provide support. And it allows the company to move forward with their decision-making process and then come back to us and give the, kind of submit the application once the project is underway. So you will see that we will be coming back to you again with the actual application. We'll have the real numbers. We'll have a fiscal impact from the property appraiser, and we'll also have a more comprehensive fiscal impact from our department that we put together. After that approval, we come back to you once more with the written agreement between Pinellas County and the company. So there's still two more steps that we will be back here with this project.
Yeah. Commissioner Peters.
And has there been any more talk about more than just 10 jobs?
We did talk to the company about that. They are being very conservative in their projections at this time. And one of the things that I will tell you, we've been talking to many of our manufacturers just over the last several days. The companies are very challenged right now in trying to forecast not only their labor needs, but also their production, their raw materials, with some supply chain issues they're facing. So they did want to keep that 10, that 10-job conservative number right now. They do anticipate that it will be more jobs. Now, when we come back the next time, we will have all the real numbers at that time and probably more firm projections from the company.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Flowers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for the phone conversation and for preparing and providing information to the company, let them know why we needed so much more information to try to clarify their position. And I do know that this is a very competitive request, and I know we want to do all that we can to keep manufacturing jobs here so that we're growing our economy and continuing to attract high-end, high-yield businesses. I do think that once you get some of the additional fine print dollar figures, we'll be able to see a better projection of what this company will be able to do for us beyond the 10 jobs that they have requested. So just thank you to you and staff for following my request, which was to, can y'all go back and have some more dialogue and conversation to let them know why we need them to open up the communication with us a little bit more.
You're welcome, and thank you for the request.
Yeah, and just in perspective, the company's currently paying over 650, or $640,000 in real, real, real property and tangible property with 300 employees here.
Correct, and that's their building that's here now, it exists now, and that will remain. This is, you know, this, this project is only looking at that new building.
Correct.
And the new taxes that would be paid on that property.
And I think to the point, we, and also Commissioner Flowers commented on that, the conversations that we had, I think that was really helpful to understand at least that these, these positions, that we need folk, we need positions for all levels of income, you know, so, and it gives opportunities for people to get into the company and perhaps grow within the company, so. And the fact that this would just be for the 10 at this point, but could be more, and there might be other phases down the road. So we've got work to do still, but I think this morning, what you're looking for is just an approval to start the process.
Correct.
Okay. Any other, any, yes, Commissioner Flowers.
Thank you.
Say that again, I'm sorry. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Gerard. Any other questions, comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six to one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Item 20.
This is an interlocal agreement with the Housing Finance Authority for the, an extension of the agreement between us. Obviously, we work hand-in-hand with them for our Penny for Affordable Housing Funds and for our land assembly program.
Any questions? Yes, Commissioner Seal.
I tried to look at the past agreement and this current agreement that we're, that's being proposed, and it looks like the HFA will, basically is going to be paid up to 10% administrative fee. Is that the same as what was before?
Yeah, I'll let Bruce come up and answer that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, there's different fee structures by program, and so 10% is the fee paid for the Housing Trust Fund, and that goes back to the ordinance that established the Housing Trust Fund for the Land Assembly Program. It's not a percentage basis, but rather a project basis. We looked at percentages, but you buy a $30,000 lot or a $1 million property, a percentage just didn't seem to fit that, that program as well.
Okay, so it's basically the same as it was before?
Pretty much. We wanted to clarify some additional details in terms of payments per project, and you'll see that there's also for the Land Assembly Program, a $15,000 reserve established to pay costs, and it clarifies a few things. It adds the guidelines that were adopted by the board for the Penny for program as a reference.
But overall, at the end of the day, they're basically going to be doing the same administrative duties as they've done before?
Correct, the same programs.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Seal. Anybody else? Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Seeing no other questions, did, yeah, move approval from?
Second.
From Commissioner Seal, second from Commissioner Long. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll move on to Item 21, which is really a public hearing, so I'm going to move to Kat to introduce that for us.
So Agenda Item Number 21 is a proposed resolution for a finding of necessity deeming blighted conditions in the North Greenwood Community Study Area, establishing boundaries for a community redevelopment area, authorizing preparation of the North Greenwood Redevelopment Plan, and delegating redevelopment authority to the City of Clearwater. The public hearing was properly advertised, and an affidavit of publication has been received for filing. No correspondence has been received, and the matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Thank you, Kat. And Barry, I think we have a, just a short presentation here, if we could have that, that would be great.
Evan's coming up.
Thanks.
Hi, Evan, welcome.
Thank you very much. And we, I came and talked a little bit about this item back in April at your work session, so we've continued to work with the city to get the resolution squared away, and that's why we're here today. And if I remember, there we go. So the action today, it will, it makes a finding of blight in the North Greenwood Study Area. As we talked about last time, the city did approve a finding of necessity, which is statutorily required, to create a CRA. We're going to delegate certain powers to the city to go ahead and do their redevelopment planning, and it'll authorize them to prepare a CRA plan, which is when they'll be coming back to the county for further approval. Their process, and I'll just touch on this briefly, they went through a process of looking at several sub-areas in this map, and ultimately came into 1, 3, and 5, making up the proposed area and the area that was approved by their city. And so those are the item, those are the areas that the final recommendation is today that we discussed with you last time we were here. The adoption process to this point, there was a finding of necessity approved by the city in October of last year. They've requested our review, and we've worked with them to basically finalize any of our questions. They've been very helpful and responsive throughout this process, and we talked a little bit about some questions we had with you all in April. And our next steps after today's meeting, assuming there's approval, the CRA will begin, or the city will begin its planning process for the CRA. And we expect that to continue through probably early next year is when we'll be talking again about determination of TIF contribution and items such as that. Just as a quick summary of this, these are the combined sub-areas that I mentioned earlier in the presentation that make up the final CRA, 650 acres. It's part of the at-risk zones that were identified and the economic impacts of poverty. Total projection, 2.5% growth per year, that a county TIF contribution would be about $6.2 million, 6.25, over a 20-year period, and that's a full contribution. Again, we won't be discussing that in detail until they come back with a plan and we go through our scoring process, but just to give you an idea of what we're talking about from a, for a full commitment to TIF in this area.
And they'll be investing, the city will be investing at least that much.
Yes, exactly. That was it. Kept it simple for you today.
Thank you, thank you, it was simple. Any questions for this resolution? Okay, thank you, Evan. Okay, seeing, seeing no questions, do I have a motion? Commissioner Flowers? Commissioner Long on the second. Anything else? Okay, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 22.
This is a grant award from U.S. Department of Health and Human Services for COVID-19 American Rescue Plan funding, and this is for the health care for homeless, and the amount of a little over $1.5 million over a two-year period. And the Florida Department of Health and Health Care for Homeless Co-Applicant Board will help make guides on the best use of these funds.
Any questions? Commissioner Peters on the motion, Commissioner Flowers on the second. I did have one question, Barry, I just, there was, on the background information, there was a sentence that said this award will allow the county to continue providing primary medical care. Are we saying without this, we wouldn't be doing that?
I'll ask Karen to come up and answer that question.
Yeah, I just wanted to, just some clarification.
This is probably a second award, but my guess.
Hi. Welcome.
Good morning. Karen Yachum, Director of Human Services. No, we'll be able to continue providing primary health care. What we're looking to really do with this grant is to expand to street medicine. We talked about that, I believe, last year. So we'll be able to bring primary health care to those who are living on the streets with dental care and expanded behavioral health care as well.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Anybody else have a question? Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Appreciate it. All right, seeing no other questions, do I have a motion?
Second.
Commissioner Flowers, motion. Commissioner Long on the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 23.
This is a change order number one to the annual sewer repair contract with Rowland Incorporated. They need to increase this by 1.2 million dollars for, because they've had a lot of breaks and repairs, so they're just increasing the amount.
Okay, any questions for Barry? Okay, Commissioner Flowers on the motion.
Second.
Commissioners Gerard on the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I got a couple Career Source items.
This is a subject agreement with Career Source, and the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, this satisfies the requirements for the Workforce Innovation Opportunity
Anybody with any questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
Second.
Commissioner Gerard on the motion. Commissioner Flowers on the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Second item, item 25.
This is your appointment as a board to the Board of Directors for Career Source, and this position is a replacement for the representative of economic and community development entities.
Motion by Commissioner Gerard, second by, was it Commissioner Long? Oh, Commissioner Seal, excuse me. Okay, any questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. On to the Housing Finance Authority.
This resolution approves the issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds by the Housing Finance Authority. This is for the acquisition, rehabilitation, and rehabilitation of Palmetto Park Apartments. This will provide 179 units of family rental housing. 16 of those units will be set aside for households at or below 30% AMI. 144 units set aside for households at or below 60% AMI, and 19 units set aside for households at or below 80% AMI, with a total investment of $26 million.
Okay. Any questions on this item? Barry, this, this is for the Palmetto Park Apartments. Is it the entire project? The address, I went over to take a look, was at 1003, I'm assuming that's their office address, but it's all the apartments?
I would have to ask Catherine to come up. It is? Okay.
Okay, so.
She's saying yes.
Okay. And then the other question I had, just for clarification, is 60%, at or below 60%, does that mean it generally stays in the 30% to 60% range, or?
I'll let Catherine.
Or does it also drop down below 30%?
Thirty percent. Welcome.
Yes, hi, I'm Catherine Driver with the Housing Finance Authority, so I'm a little short here. Yeah, so they are required to keep that number of units at or below 30% of area median income, so it can be below that, and then the number has to be below 60%. So it can also be under 30, it just has to be under 60. So all of those units could be under 30, but most likely, they're going to be under 60, the 144 units.
So there turns out to be a good mix of?
There is, yes, and then they do have some that go up to 80, and that's in, for the income averaging.
And that, those apartments have been pretty full the whole?
Yes, they're 100% occupied, and the entire project is going to be rehabilitated.
It's, it's nice looking, but you can tell that it needs?
Yes, and they had some moisture issues, so that's one of the reasons why they need to get in and do some substantial rehabilitation.
Okay, thanks, Catherine. Any other questions for Catherine? Yep, Commissioner Gerard.
So are people going to have to move out while this?
No, they can do in-place rehabilitation. And these were also formerly known as Greenwood Apartments, in case you remember that from years ago. So it's in that same CRA that you just, you know, approved, so.
Yeah, it's very nice. Thank you, Catherine, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Commissioner, yeah, thank you. Commissioner Long on the motion. Commissioner Gerard on the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 27, County Attorney.
Under item number 27, I'm asking that you ratify action taken by the county attorney's office with the prior approval of the chairman on a petition that we filed in relation to an animal cruelty case.
Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner, just draw a blank, sorry. This guy. Commissioner Justice on the motion. Commissioner Flowers on the second. Thank you. Any, any other questions, comments? Thank, yeah, put it over here, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Smart aleck.
Takes one to know one.
Thank you, thank you. Takes one to know one. Anybody against? The motion carries unanimously. Continue.
So yes, I have a couple of things quickly to go over under reports. First off, we've been leaving redistricting update on here really as a placeholder in case anybody has any questions, but what I do want to report to you today is that we have been engaging with the consultant that is to be hired by the county to undertake this process for you, to establish a timeline. So keep in mind, we've already talked about the substantial delay anticipated of receiving the data from the Census Bureau. That combined with your new charter provisions requiring the seating of an advisory redistricting board is really dictating the timetable that we're looking at for this process. The redistricting board is required to meet within 30 days of your appointment of that board, and that is per the terms of your charter. So what we're looking at for the appointments to be made is, would be at your August the 10th County Commission meeting. So I'll coordinate with your aides that are working on those appointments to bring those forward to you in August, with then the thought being that we would host the first meeting of that board very early in September, most likely on September the 1st. So I know that as we do engage the consultant over the summer, he will be reaching out to each of you to have meetings, to, you know, hear about your thoughts on the process and to get you briefed on what to expect as we move forward. But importantly, what I wanted to relay to the group today is that we are anticipating August the 10th for you to make your appointments to that board. Again, that would be the seven appointments that each of you will be making individually, and then the four additional appointments to be made by the county commission as a whole.
And this will be pretty much directed at, the eventual work will be maybe making changes to the boundary lines and that, moving of the lines between the districts?
Correct. What you all do every 10 years is you redistrict, not to be confused with reapportionment. You all modify your lines to ensure that the population within each of the four single-member districts are nearly equal, and then the same would, would go for your three at-large districts. What this commission has operated, the policy that this commission has operated under in the past is seeking that the population with, within each of the four single-member and the three at-large districts are within plus or minus 3% of one another. So I would anticipate that's what we would look at again this year, but yes, Mr. Chair, what the consultant will be looking at is making sure, obviously, that the population numbers, as they may have been modified over the last 10 years, still work out, and there is obviously also the opportunity to adjust some lines and boundaries along the way, which, which may in fact become necessary due to population shifts.
And then if those changes are made, any, any elections thereafter, any special elections, those are determined by the state?
Any special elections for seats that, and keep in mind, that would most likely not impact what we're doing here, because we're just looking at the seven commission seats. All special elections for, for any seat really are set by the state, that is correct, but really what we would anticipate is that these seats would take effect for the '22 elections.
Okay.
And just, you know, to kind of go over the process, what we're anticipating are community meetings that would be held in the fall to get input from the public, and then keeping in mind that the redistricting board is advisory only, then the action to actually adopt the final districts would come back to you most likely at your December meeting.
Okay. Any questions on that? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so the other issue that I wanted to bring before you today is one that I did bring. bring up at your agenda briefing last week. I did provide a document to each of you just prior to the meeting today that does contain the request from the applicant's representative, Joel Two, on the land use hearing that you will be hearing on May the 25th. This is the property very commonly known as the Tides, but is coming to you under the name Restoration Bay, which is the proposed application. So as I mentioned to you all in the agenda briefing last week, what the, what Mr. Two is requesting is an enlargement of time for the applicant to present its case at your May 25th public hearing on this issue. So just to give you all a very brief bit of background, this is a large property, as you all are aware, and therefore two public hearings are required on the land use application. So at your meeting on May 25th, you are only making a decision on the land use. This case also involves a zoning change, a development master plan, and a development agreement. Those items would be heard during August. So if you all recall at your last meeting, you did have a case under your public hearings that again was somewhat of a large property, that came forward to you with the first land use hearing, the zoning. You all bifurcated that and only took action on the land use. And I know that we've had discussions for some time about bifurcating this process. That is exactly what you're going to see here on the Restoration Bay application. So you are only hearing the land use portion of the case at your May 25th public hearing. That said, and as you will see in the applicant's email that I shared with each of you, this is a very complicated case because of the size and because of some of the other issues related. So he is asking for 45 minutes to present the case, which is what your Development Review Committee granted and your LPA. So the applicant has had 45 minutes to do the presentation at those proceedings below. My recommendation to you would be that if you were inclined to grant additional time to the applicant, that you similarly grant that additional time to your staff. The reason why I make that recommendation to you is that the law recognizes really two parties to this proceeding, one being the applicant and one being the county. So my recommendation to you would be to treat the two parties equally. So you'll see some of the rationale for the applicant's request set forth in the email. Your procedures that govern these types of hearings do contemplate somebody asking you for additional time based upon a showing of good cause. And of course, as I mentioned last week, the reason why I'm bringing this request forward now is so that the parties are on notice as to what that timeframe will be, and they can prepare accordingly in advance of your May 25th hearing. So again, this is just going to be the land use hearing, but the LPA did in fact hear all aspects of this case when it came before that body. And so much of the record coming forward to you, as you'll see on the applicant's request stated, I believe under paragraph two, much of the record that will be in your backup is going to address many of these issues. And I do believe that you'll see many of the issues that would be involved in the zoning, the master plan, and the development agreement. I do believe that you will see them brought up and addressed in the land use portion of the case. So I do believe that this is a proper request for you all to take up at this time. I think that you could, you know, approve the request for 45 minutes, you could deny the request, which means the applicant would have 20 minutes. It's certainly within your discretion to choose a different timeframe, 30 minutes or something of that nature. But with that, I will answer any questions.
Commissioner Seal?
So the zoning, et cetera, will come forward irregardless in August?
It would come forward in August, and that is assuming that you transmit the land use case to the state. So that's what happens in your land use cases, you've got the two-step process. So what you would be doing at your meeting in two weeks is taking action on whether or not to transmit that land use case to the state for comments, which is a necessary part of the action. On your zoning cases, what you'll see if you look in the resolutions that we provide in your backup when you hear a zoning case, when those come forward in conjunction with a land use amendment, your resolution approving the zoning always makes the zoning contingent upon the approval of the land use. So both of those approvals are necessary. So from a practical standpoint, if you choose not to transmit this matter to the state to get those comments and bring it back for a second hearing, that would effectively end this application.
Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I don't really have a question, just response. I don't really have a problem with the 45 minutes for the applicant and likewise for the county as the other party. What I don't want to do, that he requested in the email, is limit time for the public. So just as long as we're clear about who gets what time, but I'm not in favor of limiting time for the public at all.
And the public would remain under the policy, again, that you have established for these types of hearings, and you all are familiar with this, but just again to state for the record. And this did occur at the LPA. The residents, as you all know, are very well organized, and they did in fact have four experts that were retained and did come and speak on behalf of the community. Each of those four experts had an additional four people that yielded their time, so they were given 10 minutes, and you do see that discussed in the email here. Completely up to you, but that would certainly, placing a time limitation on the general public that wishes to address you would certainly be out of the norm for your procedures. But again, the 45 minutes here, and I did mention this last week, and the applicant does state in its paragraph three, you know, he did make reference to the presentations at the DRC and the LPA being pretty concise and to the point, and I would agree with that. I watched the LPA meeting. He was granted, the applicant was granted, that 45 minutes, which keep in mind is for the presentation of their case, but also for the time they need to reserve for rebuttal. So that's an entire presentation of 45 minutes. I do believe from my own perspective that the presentation at the LPA really was very concise and to the point, notwithstanding the fact that it was longer than usual. But again, this is a large piece of property, there are a lot of issues involved, and it's a bit more complicated than what you might normally see.
Yeah, I kind of agree with Commissioner Justice on both points, that the applicant and the county get the 45 minutes and that the provisions that we allow combining five people into a speaker for 10 minutes prevail, but not be limited. That's just my feeling as well. So any other comments or thoughts? Yes, Commissioner Seal?
I would agree, but I do want to send the message that this is not going to become the norm for our meetings. This is a, an exception to the rule because of, as Jewel stated, the large application and the acreage and everything else.
And what I would ask is for the board to either formally approve or deny this request with a motion.
Yeah, I think that was a good point, Commissioner Seal, to make. Commissioner Long?
Well, yeah, to the point that Commissioner Seal just made, it's, this is an extraordinary, only different issue than what we've dealt with in the past, at least while I've been on the commission, because it doesn't just affect the folks within the community around the Tides. It has a huge swath of residents who live in other parts of our county, in other parts of our state, and in some cases, in other countries, who have been yearly, quarterly, or whatever, residents in our county. So because of that, I think that this time is very much appreciated by everyone, and I was very happy to see that even though they had, the citizens I'm speaking about, even though they had their consultants and people who waived their desire to speak, there were still individuals who wanted to speak that got their opportunity, and I couldn't agree more with Commissioner Justice and Agarz on making sure that no one goes unheard.
Agreed. Commissioner Gerard?
I would agree with that. The only thing I would ask, and this may be unnecessary, is if we're going to spend three or four hours talking about this, could we limit the rest of the agenda, please? Yes.
Yeah, I think that?
Particularly if any controversial items?
I kind of got the impression that we had one other hearing that would be all of about, you know, it shouldn't be too long.
My understanding is there's a budget amendment set for public hearing that evening. Those typically don't take you an extraordinary amount of time, but there is also a brownfield application for the same property that I do believe is still scheduled, the first of two hearings again. It would be the second public hearing that you all entertain that night, so after the land use hearing.
Barry, what say you on the first one, the first item?
Well, again, we've tried to limit the agenda, knowing this would be coming. There are certain items, so obviously we need to be able to process. So you'll have a limited agenda, you will have other agenda items, but it won't be a large agenda.
No, I'm talking about the six o'clock timeframe. I mean, I'm assuming that we'll be done early enough, start the meeting at six, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And then do we have any other public hearings?
Just what Jewel mentioned.
Just the one? Just the two?
Yeah, the brownfield, the brownfield application, also for Restoration Bay and a budget amendment.
Okay, okay. I'm not hearing that we're worried that that's going to, that budget amendment's going to be an hour or two, like?
That'll be 10 seconds.
Okay, that's kind of what I was waiting to hear. Commissioner Flowers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a question for protocol. So for those individuals who would like to cede their time, those individuals from the public who would like to cede their time to the consultants that they've paid for, I do understand that that happened, and, you know, looking at three minutes, three minutes, three minutes, are you going to limit how many can cede their time to the consultants? Or were you saying however many determine that they would like to cede their time to a consultant, one of their consultants?
Yeah, well, for each consultant to get 10 minutes, four must cede their time.
Okay, all right. I just hadn't been through that.
Yeah, and they must be here in person.
Okay.
Well, I do believe that we're going to have the virtual option available.
For ceding of time?
I, correct.
Because you can't deny the people virtually what you would allow in person. That's why I'm trying to get some clarity on. I was trying to get clarity on how much time.
Yeah, that's new. I think, I think one of the things we've always said is that these, the folks that cede their time must be here. Now, the element of the virtual meeting changes that somewhat.
It does, and if you continue, and this case has already been noticed, making that available is an option, really your virtual appearance is, for all practical purposes, the same as your live appearance.
No, it's okay, that's a good, it's a good point. So again, when the folks that are in the audience, they raise their hands, they're here, the four people, raise their hand. So we'll have to confirm that the people that are giving up their time, if they're not here, that they're online. And then they hang up. It's kind of different. Okay. Hadn't really thought through that one too much, and kind of bothers me a little bit, but the idea of ceding time as being present, so. Okay, so that's how we'll handle it. We'll make sure, Kat, that they're online at that point. If they are, I'll read the names, try to make sure they're here in the audience, and then. Okay?
Wonderful.
Okay, thanks. Anything else?
Again, if I could get you all to either approve or disprove the request with a motion.
Okay. And the request is for 45 minutes for the presenter as well as for the county?
Well, the request is for 45 minutes for the presenter, but my advice would be to grant it to both parties, keeping in mind that's the total time inclusive of rebuttal.
I thought that was your recommendation.
It is my recommendation.
And that, right, and that includes all rebuttal time as well?
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Flowers. Commissioner Peters on the second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Barry?
This morning, I asked Steve Hayes to come forward. As you know, Steve Hayes was hired as the president and CEO of Clearwater St. Petersburg CVB, and was on the job about a year, and got to change the way we reach out to the world regarding tourism here in the county. They've been through a lot over the past year, and we thought providing him time to give you an update in terms of their activities, kind of where they're going, would be appropriate.
Steve, welcome. It's good to have you here. We've had, what, four meetings this year, and they've all been filled with dynamic, changing information. And I thought, you know, maybe we ought to come forward, and Steve and I were talking yesterday that if he had done the presentation in April, and now we put that on hold because of the length of that meeting, and we're coming just two or three weeks later, that things have changed even for the better. So it's kind of a fast-moving train, but I thought it would be really good that the commission hear directly from Steve about the state of our tourism and just a couple of other comments that he might have. Thank you for being here.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Administrator, and I do appreciate this opportunity. Barry, I think it was 90 days, my 90-day review is when everything shut down, and you had to pull a new bag of tricks out to say, what do we even do? And so here we are, a little over a year later, and in fact, I think it was in May is when the beaches reopened, and we started to see the industry come back. Before I really get into where we are going now and going forward, I did want to take a brief look backwards, because I think it's too important to see where we're coming, where we're coming from. And the first, first chart I'm going to show you is what looks at occupancy in our hotels and motels, starting in 2019, all the way over to the left and going through April of 2021. If you look to the far left, the occupancy for February and March of 2019, which were record-breaking months, you can see we were at 86 and 88%. And actually, in April of that year, we were down to 78%. So 2019, record year is where we were at. Now it's moved to the center of the chart, and that's where we get to see the, where we start off, 86% in February. We were on our way to beating 2019, and then the pandemic hit, and we started closing things down, and that's where our occupancy dropped to 52%. The 20% represents what we saw in April. And then talking to some of our hotels in terms of their occupancy, there were hotels where they didn't have anybody in their property during that, during that time period. That 20% has never been seen in this county ever. So this is truly, you know, dynamic in, in the sense of the business that we were losing. So then after that 20%, you start to see where we climbed back up after things opened. You see where it kind of flat, going up a little bit, and then you see the upward climb. The last two numbers represent February and March of 2021. In fact, April numbers had just come in, and on that, we're at 82% occupancy for the month of April, which beat April of 2019, which was at 78%. So what we've started seeing since March, mid-March, is that we've been outpacing where we were in 2019, not only in occupancy, but also in rate. And I think you will also go through and see that with visitation as well. More importantly to the county is the tourist development tax revenues. And in this here, you'll see the black line represents where we are for 2021. The dotted green line represents fiscal year 2020. And you can see from there that for the first five months, we were on pace to beat 2019, again, which was a record-breaking year. In March of 2020, our TDT collections was 4.9 million, which normally is nine, around, over nine, nine million. April, which I didn't even show the bottom, because it'd really skew the chart at this point, but the bottom in April, there was, they collected $722,000. We normally collect over $6 million. So you can see that, see that decline. For fiscal year 2021, we're pacing right at about fiscal year 2018 results. And then in my notes, I have, however, we don't have the March numbers in. And then, in my notes, I have, however, we don't have the March numbers in, and the March numbers actually came in yesterday. And March 2021 exceeded March of 2019. So we're at 9.7 million for March of 2021, compared to 9.5 million March of 2019. In a lot of our data, we've, we've kind of stopped taking 2020 out because of the delta of the difference, and really looking at that benchmark year being 2019. The overall impact on tourism, the fact that we saw less travel, it did impact all areas of visitation. Everything from number of visitors to the spending, their economic impact of tourism, visitor jobs, visitor payroll. But again, keep in mind that you're looking at just about, I think it was about 45 days of nearly nonexistent travel during that, that time period. So over the 50-plus weeks, on a weekly basis, we would get national research that would look at what's happening. And part of that is that we wanted to have a perspective, what's happening with the ultimate traveler? What are they thinking? What are they feeling? And how would that go through and impact us? And Destination Analyst, who did this on a national level, is also our research company. So we were able to go in on a weekly basis and kind of see what's happening there. I could, as Commissioner Eggers knows, Commissioner Gerard knows on sitting on the, you know, the TDC, you know, last year, there could be a plethora of data I could have shown here, but I was told I have a hook that'll take me off very quickly, so I do want to take one slide in particular. And I think this goes to set the stage of expected leisure travel in 2021. Now, I should mention that this is from the end of March, so even now, it's even changed, but it's all good news. But basically, 84% of travelers looking at, they would travel between the months of April and December, with a lot of that coming during the summer months. When we look ahead, our vacation rentals today are in pace to beat or equal 2019, and that's for early summer. In fact, when we looked at May, we were already outdoing 2019. As we look to June, we're even with 2019. And as that booking window is a short window, we expect that to continue to be to the positive. One of the things that we're doing this year, as you all know, in the past, as we moved out of spring, there would be the lull in travel, then we would ramp up and really go with in-state travel. We have actually kept our out-of-state message going, and we're going to keep that going through June before we even switch to the in-state message, because we feel that demand is, is that strong, especially from some of the markets up in the lower to upper, or I'm sorry, lower to mid Midwest, as well as the Southeast. All indications are, when we look at hotel motel data, vacation rental data, airport data, our research through Destination Analyst, even what we're seeing through Visit Florida, that our summer should exceed what we have seen in summers previous. And a lot of that is because there is a pent-up demand for folks to get out and travel. And I think that, that bodes well. I mean, you know, previously, the spring travel, lull, summer travel, lull, and then you get into late, late fall and winter. And some of the things that I'm hearing is there may not be a lull as we head into summer at all, it's just going to keep busy up until that fall time period. I did also want to address as well, the Rise to Shine campaign, which is really a PR effort to help educate our visitors about traveling safely and responsibly. And I know that that's past us at this point, but during that time period, I think it was very critical for us to have, have that message. We were encouraging consumers to commit to a Rise to Shine pledge and be entered in a sweepstakes for an ultimate beach giveaway, but our pledge was quite simple, mask up, spread out, wash your hands. And I think this one is probably the most important, which was be patient and kind. And that is really coming back to the workforce and being, and a lot of our industry having troubles going through to find people to work. This campaign was promoted radio, social, broadcast, TV, prior to travel trip giveaway. And then, in market, we went through and rewarded visitors in the destination that were following appropriate safety protocols at the time. We had Sunshine Stewart treat teams, street teams at poplar spots throughout the county, beaches, piers, John's Pass, Beach Drive, Dunedin, Tarpon Springs, and many other. We ended up, over a time period of roughly about 45 days, 600 gift cards that were good for $25 at local businesses, and it was to visitors to the area. And that could have been a day visitor, it could have been someone coming from Illinois, but again, showing good behavior while, while they were, were here. We had, in 45 days, we had over 32,000 individual entries take the Rise to Shine pledge. When we started this, you know, we just wanted to go through and be able to help tell the message. What happened was, from a PR aspect, it got picked up nationally. In fact, we ended up being in the New York Times, Washington Post, USA Today, Fox News National, Fox Business News National, local news outlets, statewide outlets, social media channels. And over that time period, the PR element of it generated over 85 million impressions for a media value of $1.7 million. A lot of it is, again, the directive, and I remember the discussion that we had in Mr. Administrator, I think it was in December, it was like, we don't want to have the visual imagery that we saw last year in March, and so what could we do to avoid that? And I think this community did that. You did see it in other places, but I think it was getting that message out, not only to our visitors, but, but locally as, as well. As, I would like to conclude with one item, and again, from the Tourist Development Council, one of the things that we're working on this year is a strategic plan. We are starting this process now. This strategic plan is our roadmap going forward. It's a five-year plan. In that, it's going to be comprehensive, it's going to be collaborative, and it's a conversation with a variety of stakeholders. And when I stake, mean stakeholders, those in the tourism business, those that are civic leaders, business leaders, elected officials, and we even have part of that, a resident sentiment survey as well. And the idea behind that is we take all the, the things that come out of here, and this lays the groundwork of how we drive tourism forward over the next five years. This, so as Commissioners, you're going to be, we'll be sending out information on how to participate in, in parts of this process. We're doing one-on-one interviews, online surveys, and then, now with the ability to get together in a larger group, even, even workshops as we go to fall. Final results to this to be presented in January of 2022. But again, I think it's critical that we hear from everybody to be part of this, because that really helps set the stage of where we go over, over the next five years. And with that, Mr. Chair, I, hopefully, that covered everything you and I talked about.
You had made a comment that you had wanted to recognize a couple of people, and that, and I think it'd be appropriate to do that before we get questions.
Yeah, and I, and, and maybe at a future meeting, I could have them here, but I know the TDC meeting I'm having, but Brandy and Justin and our staff that were part of our street team, they were out interacting on a daily basis with the public, and again, going out and talking about the Rise to Shine campaign. And, you know, it was invaluable. I loved seeing the pictures, you know, I loved hearing the stories of them interacting with the visitors that were out there, but they did a great job for us in being active. They were also very instrumental. We just finished up National Travel and Tourism Week, and really helping out in a variety of areas, including, we just had a big rally at St. Pete Clearwater and National Airport. And it was so refreshing to see folks getting off the plane, they're landing here, they're ready for vacation, they're excited. We had a number of chamber partners there with us, a couple of museums with us. And as I told the Chair yesterday, I think we need to do that more often, because it really was a welcoming experience for our visitors.
Yeah, I had talked to a couple of chair, executives at chambers who happened to participate, and said it was just a lot of fun, and kind of rewarding to them individually, but I do think the idea of doing it more than once a year would be, it would be good and welcome. So with that said, Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Steve. You said that in 2019, we had 15.3 million visitors, in 2020, it dropped to 12 and a half million. Any idea what we're projecting? I know it's still half a year, but what we're projecting for this year?
At the rate we're going right now, I would suggest that we are going to be close to 2019. And I say that because, you know, again, March has come out, and we exceeded 2019. All indications that I'm hearing from our hotel years, April, we will exceed 2019, and I think summer will exceed it. So that's why I say that.
Sure.
Just from that perspective.
My question is that, that we, and I don't know, what are the limitations as far as international travel right now, as far as Canada, UK, Germany? What are the limitations they have as far as coming to the United States?
Well, and that's a great point. Right now, internationally, our, like example, Canada, you can come here, as in fly here, and then, you know, head back home via flights, but you can't drive here. So there's a whole audience that we've missed this year, and currently are missing. Out of the UK, out of Europe right now, we don't have that, those travelers, we hope to have them this fall. And when I talk about recovery, let me just mention, there's three audiences that we don't have, really two. One is the international traveler. And so if we can get that back in fall, we're ready to go. There is a, I mean, if you thought pent-up demand in the United States was strong, internationally, it's even, it's even stronger. So you have that element. The second one is business travel, and business travel includes conferences and meetings. And until that comes back, that affects another set of hotels that, right now, traditionally, you know, are booked midweek with that business traveler. You know, they're, they're having to go fishing in a pond that they haven't been used to fishing. So we need those to come back, and that will help us be, you know, even stronger.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of where I was going, is if, if we're exceeding 2019 without segments of our typical market, then, you know, do we have enough room at the end kind of thing, is, is the question. And then, maybe at a later date, we've, we've grown exponentially in the last eight years. I think when I came on the commission, we were at $30 million, and now we hit a high mark of over $60 million. And we started, I know a few years ago, we started tapping into other markets, Detroit, Indianapolis, and some of those. And I love, again, not today, but I'd love to know what we've kind of spent in those second markets, you know, beyond the New York, Chicago, and then what's the results, how, what event of those kind of dollars? So just at a future time, when you, when you get a moment.
And if, if I'm, Mike, Mr. Chair, so just real quickly on that, this year, we've, we spent more resources in that mid to lower Midwest. So in your Indianapolises, Cincinnati, Columbuses, Lexington, Louisville's, you know, Nashville's, that we had not been in before, or very, very small presence, because we, early on in the pandemic, we saw them coming in. And so we said, let's just go after those markets, it's fly and it's drive. And it's not that we didn't give up on a Chicago, but we weren't spending the resources there. Same thing with a New York or a Boston. So that's why we're keeping this going, because we still see that travel. And then I think going forward, those kind of markets, we need to keep at top of mind, because it really drove business.
Thank you, Commissioner Justice. Anybody else? Okay, well, Steve, thank you. Appreciate your time, and keep up the great work, and we had a great tourism luncheon also last week, and just, it must have been over 250 people in the tent, lots of energy, lots of hugging, lots of smiling, lots of optimism going forward. So thank you for your time this morning.
Right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
The other item I have is a reminder that we have budget meetings coming up, May 19, 20, 21st, for the departments to report to you, and some of the appointing authorities, and then moving into June, June 16, 17, 18, for constitutionals and appointing authorities. As we, you're gonna, you're, we're gonna put everything out, you know, in our budget, so you'll see a lot of requests, what we're doing, we're meeting right now, we're sorting out wants versus needs. And so with the comment earlier under public comment about the, the gas tax, that'll be one consideration, but let's look at all these in the context of a total budget. And so when we come back, I'll present to you one budget and one budget recommendation that'll incorporate all those together to where you see it with a clear picture. So as we're talking through the different needs, you know, we'll, we'll take that as, 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 as requests, dig for more information and lines, we can prioritize that, but it really will be better when we look at it in the context of all the requests and the choices that we have coming up here in the July time period. So we have that coming up, and that's all of my report.
Okay, any questions for Barry? Thank you, Barry. Appreciate it. Okay. Yeah, oh, sorry.
I do have a thought, and I, I'm sorry I didn't think about it in the workshop, but when we talked about, when we go back to the courthouse, can we, I, I think our workshops are very valuable in that you do presentations, and a lot of people that watch really benefit out of those presentations. And so prior to coming here, we were not filming our workshops, and I would like to suggest that we continue to film our workshops, so that the people, the viewers can still have the opportunity to learn from those presentations, and, and truly be transparent, and, and watch the process as it goes. I'm sorry I didn't think about that Thursday, and I just wanted to bring it up again, for us to consider that. I'd hate to go back into that fourth floor room where it's not transparent, and the people miss out on those wonderful presentations.
Well, the issue, obviously, is the fourth, fourth floor conference room. There's not a lot of room to set up, and so it's not wired for us to be able to tape and have, you know, the setup that we have here. I see a puzzled look.
No, we're, we're, we're still gonna do, if we, if we go back there, I mean, we're not going back there, we've already talked about that through, what did we say, July?
July, but, but even in July.
So that'll get us through most of, obviously, all the workshops. We still may have something in August. If we do go back in August, any meetings related to budget will be done in the chambers.
Yes, I think you're, are you referring to workshops?
I'm, I'm referring to workshops. I didn't, I didn't like that we put them in the fourth floor. I didn't like it at all. I felt it wasn't transparent, and you were given presentations that people could have learned from, and, and they weren't provided the opportunity to learn that. And I just feel that, you know, we could do the same thing in that same chamber if we do workshops without having to go downstairs, since it's not wired downstairs. I, you know, I came up, I thought about it the other day, and I feel really strongly about transparency, and I feel very strongly that every citizen should have the opportunity to watch the whole process. And every one of those presentations, I mean, I've been watching all the presentations we've been having during workshops, and people benefit from those. And it helps them understand what we do, because I think, before the pandemic, most people didn't know what we did every day, or, you know, really, even what our responsibility was. And so I, I just hate to have us go back into shade on workshops where people aren't able to benefit from that, and, and see the process and how everything works every day. So it's just a thought that I came up, and, and I just think it's something that we should consider and not go back down to that fourth floor, is, is my thought, and I hope that everyone agrees, because I don't like doing our workshops in the shade. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think there's any issue with accommodating us up, up in the, up in the chambers for workshops. And I understand the idea behind workshops, but I do think some of the topics that we're having are extremely important.
They are, it's a different type of meeting. It, you know, when we get into a workshop format, I, I mean, I'd rather find, as, as we had talked about at one time, actually making some, we, we actually tried to change and move out the wall to where we can set the layup, to where we're around a table, and we're talking and interacting. It, it does change the dynamics of the meeting. But I understand the issue of the, of the recording. Had we been able to expand, we were going to wire it to where you could record and, and broadcast for whatever type of meeting. And we found out fire code issues prevented that. We can look at, at some hybrid model.
Yeah, and I think, and I think the, the recognition with that effort was that it would, we could do both. We could have that different atmosphere, but also be, quote, televised, so that people could see what was the, the presentations and all of that. Not that you can't go online and get, see them after the fact, but I think there was some real value in that. And I think to the extent that we can try to do that, I think it's a good idea. I, that's what I think. I mean, I'd, I'd rather, I'd rather give up on the, the intimacy of a meeting to open it up. I would agree with Commissioner Peters on that. But anyway, that's not, we don't have that issue in this month, next month, or July on any of our meetings, it'll all be here, so.
We'll, we'll staff that and bring back the recommendation to you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have some conversation about that. Yeah, we'll have some conversation about that. Yes, Commissioner Long?
I agree with the comments that everyone else has made with regard to the transparency, but what I hope we don't start doing is taking public testimony during our workshops, because that is our time to get our questions answered and have a really deep dive opportunity so that our regularly scheduled commission meetings, you know, aren't lasting for 24 hours at a clip. Right? Okay, thank you.
And that's the general direction. Every once in a while, a chair might slip up and.
We'll look at it and bring it back to you.
Mess up, but we try, we try to have our, we try to have that time for us and not for input. But anything else on that? Okay, so now, moving on to item 30, which is appointments to the St. Peters, South St. Petersburg Community Redevelopment Agency. And as you can see, we have ballots, that we could do ballots or we could do voice vote. If you see the worksheet, we have to choose three. There are four that are eligible, Erin McFarley, Tracy Mater, Stephen Morrison, and Javon Turner, who is also a reappointment. So we have three new folks that are eligible, plus Javon Turner, who is a reappointment. So we have four people for three spots. And we have ballots, if we prefer that, and if anybody has any comments on any of the four applicants, it might be helpful for the rest of the committee.
Mr. Chair. Yes? I mean, we have to take a swing at this for you and see if it works, but I would move the appointments of Turner, McFarley, and Morrison for the South St. Pete CRA.
And I will, any, okay, he said McFarley.
Turner, I'm sorry, McFarley, Morrison, and Turner.
McFarley, Morrison, and Turner is the, yes, Commissioner Flowers.
I just, I have a concern with attendance with Mr. Turner. If you're going to be present at the, if you're going to participate with any committee, especially with this one, you need to be present. And so I'm just sharing that I have a concern with attendance with Mr. Turner.
Okay, well, that's good information. Yes, Commissioner Long?
May I ask how many meetings he has missed? Do you know?
I am sorry I did not bring my notes with me, but I did speak to council member, a council member who was previously on the committee, and it was well over three meetings, and they don't have very many meetings. And those were when some very serious considerations were being decided about projects to move forward to the city council to determine whether or not they would be approved.
And were those meetings his past year, and were they, were they able to do it remotely, virtually as well?
There were times when they couldn't take action because, no, they could not meet remotely. They did not meet remotely.
Okay.
And there were times when business could not be completed because there was not a quorum.
So it was an issue last year specifically?
It was a concern. And that's what I got from someone who actually served on the committee. So not that I have anything against Mr. Javon Turner, I know him, but again, that just is always my concern. You know, we have the same issue with Tibarta. When you're not there, you can't handle business, and it makes it difficult to move things along.
Commissioner Flowers, the only question I'd ask is, was the attendance issue this past calendar year mostly, or has it been that way?
Since he's been on.
Okay, that's what I wanted clarification on. That's okay, no. Last year was so odd that I hate to penalize too much on last year's.
And I would concur, because of COVID and all of that stuff that was going on, I would concur. You give grace, you know, because we've had to make some changes as well, but.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, did you have, did you have anything? I'm sorry, I thought I saw another hand over here, just in my mind, I guess. Anybody else? Okay, so we had three that were proposed. The maker of the motion, that there was no second on, but is there a maker?
There was a second.
There was. Apologize, Commissioner Seal. That's where I saw the hand, it was on the second. Any changes in your motion based on the comments that were made?
Nope, my motion stands.
Commissioner Gerard?
Given the comment, do we have paper ballots here? Can we just, can we just do that?
So I have a motion and a second for three. I guess the maker of the motion and the second are okay with us moving to paper ballots? Because that is on, that is on the floor, so.
But we have, we have a motion and a second, let's all vote, and then we can move on.
Well, that, no, this is, she was asking for ballots on this vote, and so I was asking the maker and the secondor if they minded switching to a ballot, or do we want to go ahead and vote? You guys?
I would, I was trying to save us going through the hassle of all the multiple votes that will happen with paper. I'd like to go ahead and take a vote, and if it goes down, it goes down.
Okay. You're good, all right. I'll just say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. So it sounds like the vote, I only saw, heard one aye, correct? Two ayes, okay, two ayes. And the nays have it five to two. So that threesome is voted down. So do I have another motion? Or do we move to paper ballots?
Paper ballots.
Okay, we'll move, yes. Go ahead, you can pass those out. Go ahead.
I noticed that Tracy Matier is with CHAF. Is that?
I can't hear you.
Microphone.
I can't hear you.
Microphone.
I noticed that one of the applicants that will now probably be considered is with CHAF, and I didn't know whether that was a potential conflict of interest.
Who?
Tracy Matier.
Oh.
Is with, can Tim?
Well, I'm not sure who vetted this for eligibility, but I'm assuming that that was checked, that there is no conflict. I'm assuming that was the question, Commissioner Seal?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm not seeing anybody jump up and tell me that eligibility cleared any issues along those lines.
Evan Johnson with Planning Division. We, the eligibility requirement and review was really just based on status as is in the interlocal agreement, which is related to a business owner, property owner, other stakeholder within the district, within South St. Pete CRA. So we didn't specifically identify conflicts of interest, which, you know, being that we are including business owners or organizational leaders, you know, I would assume there could be potential conflicts.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And if that is an issue that people have a question on, I can tell you, I have not reviewed this. It would need to look into it further than in just a couple minutes here, so.
Well, I don't know where.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Could we please delay this vote until our next meeting? This seems a little silly to keep on moving forward when there's questions about the applicants that we.
Well, I don't, I mean, I, we're right on the verge of voting, but Commissioner Seal raised the issue of a conflict, and so I wanted her to maybe explain that further. And if she has no other explanation, then I'd like to move forward on the vote. Commissioner Seal, any other comments on that? Okay. All right, we have a ballot, we'll go ahead and vote.
Well, I'm sorry, but I have a question, maybe Jewel. I have a very difficult time voting here, not knowing if people are actually really eligible to even be sitting there, and I clearly heard you say you would need some time to look into it. So if everyone has come, I mean, I just have a really tough time with, we've already had in the past, you know, votes on people who had not been totally vetted, and we live to regret it, as I recall.
Well, I don't think this has changed from anything we've done in the past for these CRA positions.
Okay, that's your opinion, I'm just telling you mine.
Okay, well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
And not knowing without a legal review, just because this applicant is employed by a certain company doesn't mean there would be a conflict unless there was a particular agenda item that would be the conflict, would be my.
There could be a prohibited conflict, but again, not, which means you cannot participate. Conflicts are not always waivable. But without the facts, you know, we really can't take a look at this. I don't know the individual's position, your position, and ranking within a company would certainly play into it. You all could certainly take a vote today, and if the individual in question prevails as an appointee, we could certainly look into this further. You know, the remedy being if there was a conflict, they would need to remove themselves, and you would need to vote for a substitute member.
Commissioner Peters?
Well, that was, that was my comment, is that if, if in fact there is a conflict, then that seat just comes open for a new vote, and we do that process over, but the other two then would be appointed. And that way they have, at least can have a quorum of appointed people, so I think, I think a vote today is appropriate.
All right, we'll go ahead and move forward with the vote. You got all of them? Kat, did you get them? Okay. All right, and we'll move on to item 31, which is the appointment, reappointment to this council, the county council for persons with disabilities. And it looks like six reappointments, and Karen Seal, Commissioner Seal, you have a new appointment. It looked like a couple of others put their names in, but these are individual appointments. And so all seven of us have made an appointment. I need a motion for.
Move approval.
Commissioner, Commissioner Justice, and then Commissioner Seal on the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And then that just brings us down to the end of the meeting, which is our county commission, a new business, and anything pertinent for our board updates, policy consideration, anything you all want to bring up. Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any board updates, but I did want to ask the administrator just if he had heard anything. There's a lot of national news this morning about availability of fuel. I had no problems this morning when I got gas. There was no lines, there was no issues, there was no pumps covered, but I didn't know if you had heard anything, or if you do, to keep us abreast of that.
The only issue is things that I've read, for instance, you know, a national trucking shortage for long-haul drivers, and I know there's other port issues and things like that, but, so, you know, the article that I was reading, for instance, you had long-haul truckers which have a high turnover rate. The schools were shut down early last year, and so therefore, there's going to be time where they can't find a sufficient number of drivers. I don't know how that impacts us versus maybe the Midwest where we have ports delivering fuel. So I think it's probably, you're seeing that, and I've heard about that, but nothing more.
It was also the ransomware issue with Colonial Pipeline, and I think it was more southeast than South Florida, but just wanted us to be, keep it on our radar.
Yeah, at the last meeting, I'd mentioned that same thing, Commissioner Justice, and I know our economic development folks are currently doing some of that work, reaching out to our business community and getting some, I don't know that they're ready to report to us yet.
I haven't received anything yet.
But I know, and I spoke yesterday to a member, and they basically said that work's in progress, and they're getting some really good information back about issues that our businesses may be anticipating having or already having. So that's apparently coming at some point down the road. Okay? Anything else, Commissioner Justice? Anybody else? Commissioner Long?
Yes, I have just a few things I would like to share for the good of my colleagues and those who are interested. The bus on shoulder again, the bus on shoulder event with Florida Department of Transportation is scheduled for 10:00 AM on Friday, June 4th. Our Forward Pinellas Board Meeting is tomorrow, May 12th. And I just want to remind you that the FAC Annual Conference is June 29th and to July 2nd, and you heard Melissa talk about, they're hopeful they can do it all in person this year. It'll be at the same place over in Orlando as we've done in the past. And this is a really exciting one that I hope you'll tickle your calendars for. It's in January of next year, and it's the 2022 Second Summit for the Regional Resiliency Conference that we had done almost two years ago now. And it's going to be January 27th and 28th at the Hilton Carillon. And if all of our planning goes the way we are hopeful, we'll have some national very prominent speakers at that event, so please stay tuned. I know you won't mind hearing a lot more about it as we go forward. And just a quick reminder that the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office Fallen Officer Memorial is tomorrow morning, and I unfortunately don't have the time. Do you have it, David?
Yeah, it's at 11 o'clock.
11 o'clock.
11? Okay, thank you. And that's it, Mr. Chairman, for today.
Thank you. Anybody else? And the only thing I will add, I was going to mention the officer memorial, thank you for that, Commissioner Long. And at Tampa Bay Water, at our next meeting at 9:00, we're going to go into a workshop, and we're going to be talking about everybody's favorite topic, and that's reclaimed water. So if you want to find some, it is a really, really important deal as to how we use it or use it as an agency going forward, and what role it will have, and ultimately what price the members will pay for an individual member's reclaimed water as an input resource to our process. It's kind of a tough little meeting to get through. It's a lot of issues that we have to really get into, and there's ticklish issues with some other of our member governments, but anticipate about an hour and a half meeting, and then maybe another hour, so it shouldn't be too long of a meeting, but that's a really important one as we move forward, looking at our next water supply project that's being evaluated right now. So with that said, I don't see anybody else. Did you have something? Oh, yes, back to the results. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair, for Agenda Item Number 30 for the St. Petersburg Citizen Advisory Committee for their CRA, the three individuals who were selected by the commission by a majority vote were Erin McFarley, Tracy Mater, and Stephen Morrison.
Okay, thank you for that. Appreciate it. With that said, we are adjourned.